This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, everyone. Good evening. This is the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for April 20th, 2023 at about 6:07. We're calling the meeting to order, and could we please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance? Francine?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, I don't believe we have -- we've got a quorum tonight. John is absent. He's on work business, out of town. So, we will get going here. Anybody for open time for the public? Sing. I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't see you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Lucy Dawn, Town Clerk. I just wanted to remind everybody again, annual town meeting, May 2nd, at Norris, 7:00 PM. And I just wanted to -- I know that you already know this, but I just wanted to let you all know that if there is going to be an override question that goes on the warrant for the town meeting warrant, and it has to pass at town meeting, it has to pass at the ballot, if it has to pass on the town meeting warrant, that is May 2nd, I will have to order ballots, possibly on May 3rd. Hopefully, the printer will be able to get them to me by the 5th, which is a Friday, which I will probably work that Friday, and I'll probably work all that weekend to get them out on the 8th, so that people will have one week to get them back to me. I'm sorry. I don't know why I'm talking like that. That's weird. Because they have to be in by the 16th, which is one week after...
So, these are for the people that requested mail-in ballots?
Yes, and there are 802 of them. So, I just wanted to let you know that this is very -- this is a time crunch. So, if there is going to be a question, please make sure that you decide.
Yep.
And actually, the question can actually be sent and placed on the ballot even before the town meeting.
Okay.
Well, you have to give me the wording then.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I wish I had known that, because I can have the ballot ready. Like, I could have had it ready yesterday.
Okay. That might help solve a logistic issue, then.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we'll keep all that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lucy. Appreciate that. All right. So, we're hoping that a couple folks maybe will come from Finance Committee. I know Vicky had sent a note saying that she's busy with her own meeting in Westfield City Council. So, we know she won't be here, but she did send a couple comments to Bradley, I believe. And we'll see if perhaps Donna or Becky have a chance to step in. If not, we will proceed. And our basic action here is to focus on the budget where we left off on just Tuesday. So, I know we were -- we'd come up with some temporary figures of what we were looking at for a possible override, but we asked Bradley and Ed to go back and take a look at that a little bit more, and then also just reconfirm the figures in the base budget. And so, I think there's some updates there that you'll have to fill us in on, and if you'd like to take it from there, wherever you'd like to go with it. Okay. So, what are we looking at here?
So, basically, Bradley updated the operating budget for Tab 1 today, once we discovered that 2024 was a leap year and that the calculation for the hourly employees is actually 52.3 weeks instead of 52.2 weeks. So, went back in and did that. So, as you will probably remember, the deficit in Tab 1 was, I think, like $4,014 or $17 as of Tuesday night. The 5704, 73 reflects that adjustment.
So, essentially, that roughly $1,700 for that one day of craziness, yeah.
Yes.
Thanks, Jen.
Exactly. Thank you, Jen.
Better to catch it now than later.
So, and then, previous to that, I'll have Bradley scroll up, and then you're going -- you would ask me if I had any ideas of where we might close that. Of course, this was actually when it was just a little over $4,000 instead of 5,700. But the two that I came to real quickly were the town administrator's salary at $100,000, and then the addition of the...
Stop it. Is that on still? Doesn't look it.
I wonder if we lost internet?
Give us a break.
Your screen went blank.
Looks like we still have internet.
Actually, the projector went out.
I think the projector died, didn't it?
Oh, you're back.
No, I've got internet access somewhere.
Yeah, you do.
Did we just burn the whole projector?
Oh, Lord. That would be not too helpful.
Do you want to plug into the other screen?
Yeah, if we could do that.
Do that.
Better do that, just in case, yeah. Okay, Mike. That's weird. That's never happened before.
Let's see.
Maybe it's a sign that the bulb is getting weak, though. Or a cord got shifted somewhere?
It was back. Now, we're gone again. Okay.
Okay.
Great.
On for now. Yep. Anything else? Are the new panels all tight?
Anything on the floor here? I mean, there's so -- this --
Nope, nothing.
So many wires here.
No, I'm trying to keep my feet off of those crazy things.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's try this before we lose it. Yeah, go for it.
So, the two areas that I came to were the $100,000 town administrative salary and then the addition of the second person in the assessor's office, where the question is, are some savings there if they hadn't hired somebody for July 1st? So, those are the two areas that I came to fairly quickly.
Now, is the admin assistant, assessor admin assistant, that's not our current Janine? This is another position?
It's both.
It's both. It's in there, both in there. Okay.
You basically moved money out of the PA and added to an assistant so that we could cover the office better.
Okay.
So, it includes Janine plus additional, so that that covers 32 hours.
Right, okay. So, what you're saying is maybe the likelihood of getting somebody hired on for July 1st, we might be able to gain a month of leeway there for a couple thousand dollars or something?
That's a thought, yeah. Or, I don't know what the Select Board or John had in mind, increasing the town administrator's salary to the $100,000. So, or take it straight from there and make it 95.
Well, I think, you know, with the, you know, the brief discussions that we've had about your most likely retiring toward the end of the year, that, you know, hiring on somebody new, so this would get us -- we're not sure whether we would get somebody at the current salary or not. So, I think it was just a -- it wasn't based on any real figure. It was just a cautionary tale, I think, in terms of having a little bit of extra funds there.
Where else that doesn't involve a person might it come from? What is our current legal budget?
Too low.
You always say it's too low, and then we have surplus. 25, okay. And was -- what was our FY '23?
Right, so it'd be like 40 something.
It's 25, so it's level funded.
Okay. Yeah, no, I know legal, because there are oftentimes -- that's the straight-line budget from this year, right? The 25 that we put in right now?
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah. And they're often late billing us, so we never really quite know what some of these costs are going to be, and I don't know...
No, they're usually a couple months behind.
Yeah, right. I mean, I think we went through some of these other things from some of the other admin expenses and internet and website and, you know, all those kinds of things the other night to figure out where we could trim some things.
Are there any expenses that could be taken out of ARPA for this year, like one-time expenses?
I know we're getting down there. I don't worry, Chris. I know. I know. I'm very well aware.
Okay, let me turn to Francine.
No, if we look at the town administrator's, the continuation, the terms of the contract for continuation are under the current conditions. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, then, there would be that $100,000 in Budget A could be lowered for that six-month period?
Right. I mean, right now, the current terms would go through December.
Right.
Right.
So, what would be the calculation there? Of the difference, less 50%, divided by 2. So, we're looking at $16,000, divided by 2 is 8. It would be the equivalent of $100,000 a year, depending upon when it started.
Right. Yeah. I guess I would hesitate to take it all out of that line.
But some.
The bulk, yeah. But I think that's what he's suggesting, right? So, we need 5,700. So, if we took -- could we take, I don't know...
3 and 27?
Yeah, I could say 35 or something.
Let me bring up one other thing, so the Select Board can make, at least think about it before even delving into this particular issue. The wages for the hourly employees have been adjusted. The leap year also affects salaried employees. In a normal year, you would take whatever the individual's salary or contract salary is and divide it by 26, because we have 26 pay periods. Because of the leap year, we have 27 to divide it by. So, that means that, you know, whether a person's making 50,000 or 100,000, even if they've gotten an increase, what they're actually going to see as of the July pay periods could be close to the same. I don't know if it'll be a reduction or not. I will give you an example. I did a quick calculation on just what my own current salary is, and the difference between dividing it by 26 and 27 was a $100 per pay period. Reduction.
Reduction.
So, there's two ways to look at it. I know Jen was talking to Vicky in Westfield today, and, you know, they're just doing the straight division by 26. Right. You know, the other way to do it, but it is a good amount of calculation work, is actually to calculate it out by the days and actually adjust the wages or the salaries that way, which actually means, again, doing another adjustment, which would increase the Tab A budget and make that deficit larger. But I just want to bring it up to the Select Board, so you are aware of that.
But can I just -- what definition of salaried are we using? In all the 40 years that I worked, and there were at least 10 leap years, I would guess 10 times, I don't -- and I was always salaried. I don't remember any kind of an adjustment. So, I'm just trying to get it.
Jen, could you come up to the mic, sorry?
Are you talking contract employees versus not?
Jennifer Day, Treasurer Collector. So, for hourly, definitely, because in 2020, 2020 was budgeted without considering the leap year, and all of the hourly employee wages ran short that year.
I'm fine with hourly. I'm talking salary.
Okay, salary. So, yeah, so salary, it's not like there's an increase necess -- like, how it's calculated, I'm not really exactly sure how it works, honestly, when there's a leap year and 27 pay periods. So, that's never happened since I've been here, so that's why I reached out to Vicky and Donna. Donna's coming tonight and is going to explain it, how South Hadley does it, because she says it needs to be done by the day. Like, she says if you don't calculate it by the day, it won't be -- it's not correct.
Even for salaried people?
Mm-hmm. So...
Because salary isn't really salary, you know? That's the bottom line. It's still their -- time sheets are still by the week.
Right, yeah. And there are certain hours put towards every salary for that week. So, Donna was going to explain it, because I think she can explain it better than I can. So, because...
But are we saying, the way I'm hearing, that we don't really have a choice but to use 27 weeks rather than 26, right? I mean, we have to calculate...
There's 27 pay periods that fall within the fiscal year.
Right, 27 pay periods, that's what I meant, sorry.
Right.
So, we have no choice but to use that, really?
You're right.
But then what you're saying...
Tell everyone, you're not getting a paycheck this week.
Yeah, right. But then the extra work to go back and calculate all this by hand again to add in the extra day, essentially, right? Or you've already done that for most of these except the...
No, we haven't touched the salaried individuals at this point.
Yeah, just the hourly ones. But that would most likely increase the deficit that we're trying to solve right now.
Yes, there's no doubt about it.
How do people feel about moving the turnout gear to ARPA? We talked about that as a backup plan if the override didn't pass, but if we're going to add to the 5,000, that's a $12,000 expense. I know we're very protective of the remaining ARPA funds, but that seems like appropriate use of it.
We didn't take that out of there yet? No, it's in there?
No, it's still in there.
That was a suggestion as a possible override solution, you know, if it doesn't pass. But that would do it. I would be more inclined to do it on equipment than I would on people.
But it's... Yeah, because the request was, well, base budget was 12, and we were aiming for 15 for the override, yeah. I mean, I think there's money within ARPA to do that. I mean, we could do that as a one-time expense, although we know that it comes back every year. I mean, it's...
Well, we did the MSO 4 outside the budget. We just have to remember in subsequent years that it's going to have to be accounted for.
Well, currently, turnout gear isn't in Budget A.
No, it's not.
No?
It's only in the override budget.
It's only in the override?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that doesn't help, then.
Yeah. Okay, yep, you're right. We took it out, then. Okay. We were ahead of ourselves last night.
Yeah, we put it in the override.
Yeah, that's right, we did. Okay. And we increased it actually a little bit, yeah.
Do it one day.
Okay.
So...
If you want to take it out of some type of expense account that we can touch, then he's going to shoot me, but would you please go to Highway?
So, the building expenses?
Go back, so I can see the amended budget, please. Okay, thank you.
We know for a fact that the MSO...
I would probably look at, let's say, I always mess this up, is it the general highway expenses and take the $5,000 from there?
Can I use winter rate, weed, winter roads expenses?
We can't, no.
Yeah, they get it out of winter roads.
That went up a lot. Now, remind me, we did it because of the -- what was the reasoning on the winter roads?
What was the narrative on that? Do we have...
Yeah, I think we took -- we level funded winter roads and moved some of it in here, is my memory.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that's a pretty big jump, from 148 to 228?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, because I think we...
Yeah, we moved the winter wages, which I think was, I think my memory was, it's like $29,000.
Here, 21, or, no, sorry, 20...
So, winter roads expenses were level funded, and so were winter roads wages.
Correct.
But we piled more into general highway expense and general highway wages.
$80,000, yeah. Put an extra $80,000 in there.
Right. Well, that does seem like...
Would you, I mean, is it, would you want to take it all out of there, or divvy it up still among some salary items?
I would say just make it simple and take it right from there.
Take it out of there?
Yeah. So, it's one of the biggest expense accounts in the municipal side.
Okay. All right, well, let's see what that does.
That isn't contractual.
Yeah.
Are the highway salaries budgeted for the people working out, or is it also budgeted for the two open positions?
It would be for a full staff.
For a full staff? Chances are, they won't have a full staff here, right?
Yes, however, I'm going to just remind you that we've got currently about a $60,000 winter road deficit, snow and ice, and guess where that's going to come from? So, if you play that next year...
But that just takes care of the $5,700.
Right, that gets us to the balanced budget for the core budget. That's where we are.
Okay, because we're going to stick then with the 26 weeks? Or, I'm sorry, we're not going to factor in the difference for the salaried?
Well, I think we're going to have to.
Yeah.
Then that's going to be, we're going to need more than $5,700.
And we don't have a sense. I mean, it took you, what, it was about $1,700 or so that you had to factor in for the wage adjustments you just did because of leap year?
For the hourly.
For the hourly ones. So, we don't have a sense whether the salaried ones would be similar or more, or probably more?
More, because they're probably higher percentage.
Higher percentage, yeah.
Well, again, it's, I'm assuming it's one day, you know, rather than saying 27 is another, you know, 10 days of pay, you know?
Right.
Pay or whatever, but that's what I'm thinking at this point. So, it may not be as onerous as I might originally think, when say 26 to 27, that's two weeks.
Yeah. So, you'd end up having to calculate one day's worth, if I'm understanding right?
Is it, is that 27th pay period, one day? Do you know, Jen?
For the hourly, yes, it falls up, there's one day, well, the 27th, I brought it.
Could you come up again, Jen, sorry, just so we can all hear?
So, the 27th pay period is for a full two weeks.
Oh, it is.
Yes, it is.
So, then there is another pay period afterwards, that's for one day. It's Sunday, June 30th, but that would only include, like, hourly, fire, police, maybe highway if there was overtime, but it's not going, nothing, I think, that will affect...
How many days in the first pay period, then?
So, the first pay period in '24 is on July 6.
So, it's actually...
So, it's...
That one actually has only six days in it, and someone's getting, would be getting two weeks' pay.
Right. But their pay prior to that would be two weeks prior. So, that's why I wanted, like, I'm hoping, Donna said she was coming, because she was saying that that's why it has to be calculated by the day, because you have to know how many days are from prior year, how many days for the new year, and, you know, do that calculation for it to be correct. And she said that that's the way they used to do it. So...
And that's what she's doing in South Hadley right now?
Right, well, that's what they do, yeah. She does, I don't think she does payroll there, but that's what the person, that's what they do, yeah. So, I feel like I want to...
All right. So, what are we thinking, guys? What do we have to do? What do we know?
Bring it down for 92.5, that's six months.
I think if we don't have the numbers, then we leave it as it is. We have another hourly person in the assessor's office. We have retiring fire chief. We have retiring senior senate director. We have positions in the highway department. If we end up being short come the end of the fiscal year, it wouldn't be that much to a transfer. There'll be extra wages in those lines to cover a one day of a leap year. I think if we can at least account for the hourly people, I think that's probably good enough for now, unless we can get that figure tonight.
Yeah, which I don't, I mean, it's going to take you, it's going to take time to figure out the hourly, not the hourly, the extra day.
The first thing is finding out what we're really looking for, is that five days, six days, you know?
Right. Okay, so...
But as long as you, as long as the Select Board has made a decision by July 1st, or I'll say June 30th, then those salaries can at least be calculated correctly for the biweekly pay, and then, yes, as Rini has said, you can look and say, okay, what, you know, what adjustments actually need to be made, and are there areas that we can find that to be transferred in May and June?
Mm-hmm, okay. So, that kind of buys us that time, then, in that regard?
I think so. So, with that changed in the highway figures, we now are balanced, right?
Messing with a penny here, because the police chief's salary has additional digits at the end. So, when I change it to 85 cents clean, it's going to say we're off a penny. So, I might take an additional penny off of highway expenses.
All right.
Okay.
So, we should be there somewhere, yeah. So, that gets us a balanced budget with some time to figure this out before the first pay period in July.
Yeah.
And then we know we're there, we might find some other money.
Right, because I think it's true, you know, with people not necessarily going to be replaced on time exactly, we know we should have a little bit of leeway there. So, that gets us down to our balanced figure, yeah, on Budget 1?
Save this penny. Yes.
Perfect, okay.
And then 2 goes...
Then...
It's now 332.
Sorry, Bradley, can't hear you.
332,555,24 cents for the override.
Okay.
What's the total again? I'm sorry.
332,555.
332...
Lucy, question?
Yeah, I just was wondering if free cash was certified by June 30th, would you be able to balance, would you be able to have a special town meeting to what Maureen just said?
I think we'd have to.
You could actually, yeah, you could actually, well, you could have a special town meeting at any time if you want to transfer funds, or appropriate if you have a funding source.
Right.
Does it free cash, though, from '22 that has to be spent, right, by July 1st, or are we going to be able to use it until certified fiscal year 21st?
The thought process would be spend it, or put it into capital stabilization or operating stabilization.
It's part of, it would go to OPEB. Because normally in a town meeting, one, you put a certain percentage to OPEB, capital, operational, right? Are we doing, sorry?
Here's where we're going with this, Jen. The formula is 35 to capital.
Right.
30 to operating, 10 to OPEB. That leaves 25% hanging in nobody's land.
Right.
I'm talking about the 25% extra, where it goes.
Right. But will we know what it is to use it towards this budget or no?
Yes.
Because I thought we were really, like, you know, close.
Yes.
Because then maybe it could have, you know, I don't know. Because it has to be appropriated at town meeting, or it can't be used. Because it has to be appropriated at town meeting, or it can't be used.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
Whether it's the annual or a special.
Right. Okay, so, this looks like our figure for the override. Is that basically your final number at this point in time? Yeah?
That would be at this point, and then if the select board wanted to move forward with an override budget as it sits in the budget B override column.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, that would request in the override article would be for 332,555, and some odd cents, let's say.
And that basically would cover a large number of the, the fire items, plus one, one officer, is that right, for police?
And the admin.
And the admin, a shared admin assistant, right?
Correct, and then the increase of two at the level of our most popular health insurance programs for the addition of the two full-time medics, yes.
Okay.
And override, there's Medicare.
Somebody just pull up a payroll warrant, and let's take a look at it, and let's see if we could find out what a day costs, so we get some idea. Is that worth anything? Just, just to get in the ballpark here. I know it's not going to be the exact figure, but, because we haven't plugged in the increases, but... I don't know.
Payroll for the entire town, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, for the extra, yeah.
Uh, I don't know. If we have it, I don't know, we'll get it somewhere.
I do not, Bradley does not have a payroll warrant.
Yeah.
Jen Day may have a, the latest payroll warrant that we can look at and try to do a quick calculation of what a day is.
What one day would cost.
Do we have, on...
And it would, it would probably be just those miscellaneous salary sheet that Bradley... Yeah, would you please? If you would, if you're willing to.
Try and find that, yeah. That's not too crazy.
Let me do it.
I'm wondering if from a past payroll warrant, could we do that, from one that we've already looked at?
Yeah.
That we had it on our...
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, okay, I was just starting to... Yeah, yeah.
Or he's got a, he's got a, what he submits to electronically, so...
He just wants the miscellaneous salaries.
I have it.
He's got it, so, save your trip.
Perfect, okay. That works, okay.
So, this one is, and how many workdays?
So, we're going to make some incorrect assumptions, just so you know, it's going to be of a ballpark.
A ballpark, that was all I want, yeah.
Because some people work four days a week, some work five, some work four and a half, so, we're just, we're going to assume... Do we want to assume four, or we want to assume five?
Do the worst, do five.
Well, actually, the worst scenario would come out at four, but...
Well, that would give us a cushion for the increase.
Okay, so, these would be... Do, do this, Bradley. Do, do them on a first-on-a-five-day basis, well, which would be 10 biweekly.
So, each one divided by 10?
And then we'll, and, yeah, do, do one column of 10, and do one column of, here, if you do this, if you insert a line.
I'm doing that.
Okay? And then one column, yeah, one column for 10 days, and one column for eight days, and we'll see the spread.
So, that's one department, right?
So, now total it at the bottom of those two columns.
Seven hundred dollars?
Per, well, no, it's a range of 3,100 to 3,900 per day.
Okay.
Per day. So, that's saying one day is the worst-case scenario, there's your two. If it happened to be all of, like, 10 days of whole two-week pay period, then you'd be at 31,000 to 39,000.
Okay, I mean, that leaves... Gives us some parameter here.
But that's something we really have to decide on tonight, right, in terms of doing this? I mean, this goes back to your thought of, we can, we've got enough to get through the town meeting, and then we'd have to make these adjustments for the July 1st payroll.
Correct, if you were going to do this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, like I say, make, we'd make the decision of where's the money going to come from, and, you know, okay, is, uh, this is the actual target. Do we have an appropriate, a source that we could do at a special town meeting in June? Or do we have to wait till May or June of 2024 to find out where those funds would come from? Or a special town meeting in between?
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, where do we need to go from here, then? We have our base budget, and we have an override possibility, yes?
Yes.
We could vote for it, so, I'll make a motion.
Right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the current budget, including an override for emergency services at three... Actually, the budget, I should probably give the total amount for the budget, too. If you could scroll that, is it 19,872,80.80 and 47 cents, with an override amount of 332,555,29 cents?
Which would total 20,204,635,76 cents.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Francine's second. Any further discussion about this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, so, those are our numbers.
Okay, I'm going to go disappear for a few minutes and pull up ballot question override template, and fill it in, and see if the select board agrees with it.
Okay, okay. Do you want us to wait on going over any of the warrant articles?
You can, and it's a total draft.
Okay.
There are some that I didn't, I didn't finish some of the transfers, and they're all over the place, so... The other thing I'm looking at here is currently, we've done bylaws upfront. I might, if we're going to have the bylaws at this particular annual town meeting, and not think about a, maybe a special town meeting during, like, the month of June. Do you want those bylaws, because they're going to be quite lengthy at the front of the annual town meeting warrant? Or my suggestion would be if they're on this warrant, that they go to the end. So, it's another thing you can talk about.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm going to go find that draft language.
Okay, well, let's take a, take a look at these bylaws here, that we have a, a printout on this.
Yeah, I, I'm not crazy about having another special town meeting in June, if we, you know...
I think this is, we've got a lot on this. This is 33 articles right now, and that, I don't think...
Doesn't include the bylaws.
Does, it doesn't include...
How many bylaws are there?
Oh, it was a long meeting.
We had, the general bylaws was one amendment, but it was 10 pages long because it showed all the edits that went through.
Which is what I think, which is what I think this is. See, this, these first, these first 10 pages, the first 11, 12 pages.
What are you looking at?
Is, is all the, the language...
One through six are the bylaws, okay. One through six are the bylaws, right?
Right, one through six, so, through page 13, anyway. So, these are the bylaws, so, there should be another one that I'm not seeing here in terms of the codification. Let's just have a note on that. The, there was the, the codification of the bylaws, the general bylaws, per the new E360 code system, which was a separate warrant article, which I'm not seeing here, so I think we may be missing that one. But then after that, they were showing where the changes were. I guess I didn't realize that the entire set of these bylaws was going to be in the warrant article, in the...
In this warrant, no?
In the warrant. I thought we were just seeing the changes, which had been summarized in a separate two-page document.
Yep.
Rather than all of this written out, so we may need to clarify what we have to do on that.
These are just the general bylaws.
Yeah, this is just the general bylaws, and so, I'm not seeing...
I don't see the zoning in here.
The zoning bylaws, I don't think, are here, and those, I've heard, are like 100 pages?
I would not be surprised. There's a long meeting last night.
Yeah, it's a lot, so, I don't know, we'll have to ask again when he comes back, but let's, let's skip from the...
All right.
Okay, the next three, the next three are...
Transfers.
Those are pretty much housekeeping.
So, transfers...
And then the unpaid bills are, so, pretty standard.
Yeah, page 15. So, the transfers, though, are, we don't know if these are real numbers, or these are just copied numbers from last year. Are these real proposal numbers? Do you happen to know, Bradley? I mean, we don't have the free cash yet, so these, these numbers of 90,000, 77,000...
Well, they might be on the floor of town hall.
Yeah, they may not be the right...
Town meeting.
Okay. Might be there, we may have to modify that.
All right, they may be in there.
Okay, so then number, how about Article 11? Let's start with that, page 16.
Well, that's just a placeholder, I think. I mean, last year, I think there were three of them that were un, I don't know if there are any right now.
Which?
The unpaid bills from previous fiscal year.
No, no, I'm on number, Article 11, five-year contract.
Okay, I'm looking at the table of contents, and Article 11 is unpaid bills from previous fiscal year.
Okay, so, I'm looking at page 16. Okay, so, we don't have the same... The table of contents isn't...
Okay, I was just looking at the table of contents, since the articles are all over the place.
Yeah. Maybe easier to look at the...
Go through the document, rather than the...
Okay. Yeah, the table of contents has got to cut out.
Contents is right.
So, aside from the first 10 pages of general bylaws, then three articles, probably for transfers of free cash.
Yep.
Then, starting on page 16 with Article 11, a five-year contract for the lease for the postage machine for the town hall. So, that's to enter into a five-year contract. Another, Article 12, the annual operating budget, which is what we'll have, and then supplemental is Article 13.
Yep. And then the enterprise must be water and transfer.
Right, transfer station on 14, Article 14, water enterprise on 15.
All right, and then the transfers.
Transfers for police.
Why can't those happen? Okay.
Transfers for police operating expenses.
I guess it's just to have them in front of the...
A total of $11,000 within the police department from various education incentive accounts.
Okay, so, for the next three are just transfers?
It's, yeah, transfers for the library department operating.
Yep.
And townwide and municipal departments operating, which is combination of photocopy lease and paper, mostly. Those are internal transfers within the same departments. Funds for EMS, fire department, operating expenses, again, this will be transfers, and that language is obviously not right, because that refers to...
This is the first one of these transfers that is from another department, includes another department.
That may not be correct, though. I don't know if that's correct.
Okay, all right.
That may be a, that may be a, just a cut and paste from Article 16, so that's a question mark.
Transfer for Norris School for Masonry repairs, what's that about?
Dunno. So, 7,500 from capital stabilization for masonry repairs.
But that was already approved last year.
Was, this is last...
Yeah, I don't know if this is even relevant this time around.
Then heating...
Let's ask a question about 20.
I think the heating system 21, I'm thinking that we had that from last year, too. So, maybe, okay, maybe we should be looking at the table, the table of contents. I didn't catch what was right.
Yeah, the same thing with the Norris roof repairs, I think the...
It is, I'm sorry, okay, so, we have that on there, but we have Norris School repairs.
That's all...
Right, so, 2021, we have Norris masonry repairs, we have transfer for replacement of the heating system for the highway department, office and garage, and transfer for Norris School repairs.
Those are all from last year.
Those are 2021, 22, I think those are, yeah, from before. But what we don't have, and it may not be, I think, as you said, he didn't get all these finished out here, because what we've got on the table of contents, then, it goes, there's a couple that would be missing, so... Let's just go back up for a second here, so...
This is, you know, not up to date.
Well, obviously not, because they've been working on the budget, so, yes, so, free cash to, so, I don't know, well, somewhere to the Masked Trails Grant match for Greenway Project, I think that's not from free cash, that would be... Thought that was going to be from CPC, but anyway. Cemetery water line replacement, again...
That was the last year thing.
That was the last one, too.
I don't think any of these are over these, Chris. They're all, they're all from last year.
Some of these are from last year. There's a new one, so, like, the, so, treasure collector demand fee of $25, is that a new one?
Last year.
Last year, okay. Home rule was last year. So, the, we will have a second vote on the municipal light plant. We'd already done the health septic betterment problem.
Let's just let him update this.
Yeah, I think so, because...
Because he hasn't put the new CPC ones in here.
Yeah, so I think this has got to be, got to be more updated.
I don't think there's any comment I can make on any of these, because they're not up to date.
Yeah, and I guess my, my question would be that, I think the way that we got the information from E360 code people was that there would just be one warrant that said, this is to recodify everything that was, you know, whatever, Article Roman numeral one to Roman numeral whatever, 55, now gets renumbered as X, Y, and Z. So, I think that's one of the ones that needs to be on here, as well as...
Why don't we just look at the agenda? Because that's where they had listed that, I think, are a little bit more current.
That's a, that's a better, yeah.
So, we have the budget, the override, the water enterprise, the transfer, uh, transfer station, then we have free cash to operating stabilization in OPEC.
Yeah.
And the police department transfers.
Capital.
Capital, municipal light, the override stabilization.
So, that's one, yeah.
The revolving counts, the three CPC articles, general bylaws, zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
Naming rights.
And the, yeah, and the zoning change was the one on College Highway and Valley Road, I believe.
Yep. So, is there anything that's missing in Ecode 3, for the one that you just mentioned for the bylaws, is probably needs to be highlighted, right?
It's, it was broken into a couple of different parts, so the, the general bylaws had a couple of different articles attached to that, that one talked about recodifying, and then the second part was just the minor edits, which is what is shown in here as the edits, but I think it was summarized on a couple pages, rather than dumping in a full 10 pages, because all of the, all the general bylaws have been to town meeting at one, one point or another. And so, these are just minor, minor grammar edits.
The way we gave it to him is more comprehensible for
Yeah.
for the residents to understand what the changes are.
Yeah, so unless there's a reason to, to do this, I think it probably just didn't get understood in terms of what needed to be put in here from, or unless he's heard something from the lawyers, but...
Other than that, is there anything missing? It looks like this list is pretty comprehensive, though.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not detailed. I mean, it just says zoning bylaws, general bylaws.
Yeah.
But at, at least, I can't think of anything that is missing.
Yeah, the, the thing I know that is challenging is, is going to be the zoning ones, but, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There'll be one more that's for a contract for the Pitney Bowes postage machine.
Oh.
Yeah.
For the what? For the Pitney Bowes?
Yeah.
It's, it's in...
It's in there.
That's one that is actually in here, but...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we didn't get too far, right, because we, we're...
I was just looking at the agenda, because I don't have that.
So, we were just looking at the agenda to see what's...
Yeah, yeah.
It's actually...
There's a lot there from last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I used as a template.
Yeah, but, but, other than the zoning, it looks like...
So, some of the bylaws... So some of the bylaws ones, and we can go back on this, but the, I, I wasn't understanding, I guess, that these ten pages of the bylaws had to be in the warrant, because we have a two or three page summary that showed, or six pages, whatever it was, that showed, or five pages, I don't know what it was, that showed the changes that were minor grammatical things as a summary, rather than having to have the entire bylaw in here, no?
You can do it one of.
Yeah, sorry.
Hang on.
And then the recodification is a separate article, I think.
You can do it one of two ways, and that is either put all the wording in here in the warrant or provide a separate handout of the ten pages.
Yeah.
Right.
I think a separate handout would be.
I think, I think that's more comprehensible.
Easier and clearer, probably.
Easier to follow.
Yeah.
It's very clear what, what changes were made.
Yep.
As a, you know.
Okay. So what did you just give us, Ed? So this is the.
So if you go to the, this, this is the Department of Revenue templates. If you go, just go to the last page of it. They actually have the templated language, and I think example two, the general categories, is the one that is pertinent to us. So it would say, shall the town of Southampton be allowed to assess an additional three hundred and.
Thirty-two.
Three hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and whatever the cents is. And real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding the operating budgets of the town, uh, well, it, uh, went, skipped down real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of funding, uh, in this case, it would be.
Public safety.
Fire EMS.
Mm-hmm.
Police, and then however we wanted to word the category for those two additional, uh, health insurance policies, whether that be employee benefits, uh, health, health insurance.
And associated employee benefits or.
And associated, I like that.
Mm-hmm.
So can I see the actual dollar amount, please?
All right. So that would be roughly a paragraph worth of language that would be what Lucy would need for the ballot, is what you're saying?
Right. Five, twenty-nine, and it would say funding.
Okay. So is there.
Say fire slash EMS, comma, police. And, what'd you say, associated employee benefits?
I did, yeah. Yep.
For the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four.
Well, that, is that confusing? Fiscal year beginning.
July.
Beginning July twenty-three.
Oh, it's twenty twenty-three, you're right.
It is fiscal twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
It's where my head is today, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that would take care of at least getting some language to Lucy for the ballots, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the select board actually has to vote on that language.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion then to approve the language. Do you want me to reread it again, or just can I say as stated?
I think as stated would be fine.
As stated in this handout, and with the same dollar amount, including an associated benefits. So fire EMS, police, and associated benefits.
Okay.
And the same dollar amount, three thirty-two, five five-five, twenty-four.
Point two-nine.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we have a motion by Reenie. Could I have a second?
Second.
By Joy. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All, all, uh, all ayes, that passes, okay? So that would get you the language for the ballot question. Yeah. So let's, Ed, before you go away, I mean, let's, can't we do that for, later? I mean, we need to, let's, we need to get through the agenda here, figure out what we're doing. Because, I mean, I think if we've gotten these couple of things out of the way, that's helpful. But I think, I mean, the main focus was to see if we understood the, the warrant, because we've got to get this signed from Monday, right? So we won't have a stab of really, it's got to be posted on Monday, is that right? Huh?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So it'd have to be signed up at the latest on Monday.
Okay. Well, we hadn't planned on it.
Well, they could actually, they could have, they could vote on any amendments or whatever, and then it would just need to be signed as amended. Or they would have to meet on Monday.
I mean, I'm a little leery to, to try and vote on anything with the language that, I know you haven't got it all tidied up here yet, so I mean, just from the.
I, I agree.
I think it's hard to, to see what we would be actually approving tonight if we voted on anything tonight. I mean, what might be helpful would be just to go back through the table of contents vis a vis the.
Don't even look at the table of contents.
The agenda.
Well, this is a meeting posted on Monday. We're, you don't have the forty-eight hours, right?
No.
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 Can I?
Yeah.
Unless you want to, unless you want to post something right now, immediate eight o'clock to sign a warrant and, and have it be it.
It can be for seven fifteen.
Okay, well, something, somebody better post something now if we're not going to sign it now.
I, I was going to say, or Lucy Dalton, ten strong, wrote, I was going to say, if you sign it on Tuesday, I will be here and I will ask the constable to post it right after the meeting.
Yeah.
But that's up to you. Um, it just has to be posted, you know, Tuesday, so.
Before midnight.
Yeah. I mean, Tuesday, you know, at.
I'd rather not. I, I.
Yeah.
We're going to meet Tuesday anyway, I know, but.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. What's anybody think? Are you guys?
Well, obviously, I'd rather just do it on Tuesday, but I think that.
I won't be here Monday.
You won't be here Monday.
Yeah, okay.
So, I mean, it's, that's up to you.
We have a meeting posted for Tuesday already.
Right. So, I mean, will John be here on Tuesday also?
Should someone go grab Ed? He's going to, what's he trying to do? Post something for Monday?
Well, he can always cancel it.
He can cancel it, yeah.
He can cancel it. No, but he, let him post it, and if you have to cancel it, we'll cancel it.
Yeah.
Um, oh, I understand. I.
Well, from what I can tell from this agenda, you know, other than what you just mentioned about the bylaw, at least the placeholder for all of them are, I mean, to me, it seems pretty clear what we're trying to do, but the language, I still don't feel comfortable voting on it until I have the language, but.
Right.
Well, that's it. And we might even need until Tuesday. I mean, last time we were, you know, like wordsmithing the articles and, I mean, it might be better to just put it first thing on the agenda for Tuesday, give him and others more time to get the language right.
Yeah.
I mean, make that the first thing on the agenda is to sign the warrant.
You're sure? Because Robert was going to do his meeting Monday night, so that's the other thing.
Yeah.
So that's the other challenge. He already postponed it once.
You know, I.
I know.
I, I mean. I think Robert's actually in, I don't know if he's in a hallway or not, but.
Hold on. So, Monday the twenty-fifth, and then that's exactly a week before the town meeting of the second.
Monday's the twenty-fourth, isn't it?
Monday is the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Tuesday's the twenty-fifth.
Tuesday's the twenty-fifth, yeah.
Did I say that? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, Joy can't make it. I think that if we can do it on the twenty-fifth, like you said, and just do it first thing, and give it to you to post.
Yeah.
If that's good enough, we're just not going to have any way to change it.
It has to be posted Tuesday, yeah.
That's the only problem.
And can it get posted Tuesday night, really?
It has to be posted Tuesday, yes, yeah.
But.
On Tuesday, seven days before the meeting.
I understand that, but do we have, would the constable be available to do that, is my question?
Yeah. I'm, I will make sure the constable or a police officer posted. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That would be my preference.
We have two constables, so, yeah.
That would mean that Robert would have to do his meeting like on the, whatever, twenty-sixth or something.
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
Mm-hmm. I just don't want a warrant to be not clear for the voters to, to come and look at, and then.
Right.
You know, I mean, this is a big budget, and so I don't want them to have to look at it and be confused, so. I mean, it's your meeting, it's the town moderator's meeting, so.
As long as we can get a draft of it on Monday at the latest to re, to review, because usually there are edits.
Right.
I don't want to have to be editing on Tuesday night.
I, I don't want to really bring this up, but I will. Um, it feels to me like we've got still a lot of, long way to go, language to do on these, these articles. What are we risking if, I believe I'm saying this, what are we risking if we move the meeting by a week to the night?
Well, then we're pushing the ballots.
Why?
The, the election is the sixteenth.
Right.
We have eight hundred ballots that we have to mail out.
But what does that have to do with?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if I have the, well, I have the, if I have the correct wording, then that's fine.
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't change, then.
I mean, you should, you should have that wording to do what you need to do, and be respective of that, but.
Yeah.
We've got to, because we've got the override, I don't, we've got to have a town meeting before the election to get it on the ballot, right?
Yeah, I mean, you would have to talk to Ed and.
Yeah.
And Robert about changing the meeting to the ninth.
I don't know what our timing, it just.
Doesn't matter to me. I mean, an extra week seems like, you know, I would much prefer to move the town meeting by a week than to have a special town meeting in June. I think it is.
I, I just.
Not going to get people there back to back a month.
Well, and I just emailed Ed that I have some time that I have to take in June, so I gave him the dates that I will not be available in June.
A lot of people would want to be.
A lot of people are going to want to take some time off before they leave or anything. I'm fine with having it be delayed a week. I don't know, we should really know if John's free to do that.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, that's.
We don't want, we need to have a court, obviously.
Well, and, I mean, you have to ask Ed if he's.
Matter to you?
If it's delayed a week, no.
May ninth instead of May seventh?
No.
It's not my meeting, it's, it's.
No.
The moderator and your meeting, so.
I hear you a lot, I mean.
But it does affect me because I have people that.
For a variety of reasons, we need the extra time.
Do you think workers would be fine to be able to make it a week later?
I think so. I think so. I have them.
I think that would help us a lot.
Yeah.
But I would not favor that and then add a special town meeting in June.
No.
Right, it's either one or the other. And, and this will give us the, the opportunity to get everything in that we need to get in.
Would free cash maybe be certified by then? That would be nice.
I'm going to check.
Well, it has to be.
Yeah. So, just my thoughts. That Tuesday, you know, if, if you don't change it to May ninth, Tuesday is fine to have it posted and, you know, so.
Okay. Yeah, that just seems like, uh, it would be a lot easier for everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and because there's so many artic, I mean, a lot of these are kind of the same kind of articles that people see, so they're not.
Yeah.
They're not all that unfamiliar, but at the same time, it's a lot of articles on here that, if people who are really, you know, vested in really understanding and, and coming to town meeting, for them to have enough chance to.
Right.
Kind of digest what we're putting before them.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not sure, I, I, how many articles are on the warrant, actually?
Well, so if we did, wait, hang on, it could be, uh, one, two, three. Uh, I just went, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Maybe twenty-ish.
On, on May ninth.
But you didn't add, you didn't count all the bylaws separately.
No, no, I didn't.
The zoning ones separately.
Right, okay.
Okay, just so you know, on May ninth, the ZBA has a meeting scheduled for five-thirty. That's the only meeting.
Oh, right, yeah.
The ninth.
Mm-hmm. But that's in the second floor, probably, or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not talking about the room space, but I mean.
What time is the meeting?
It's five-thirty, and we would start at seven.
Five-thirty.
We'd start at seven at Norris, so.
We, that should give us sufficient time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shouldn't be any conflict.
Is Norris available on May ninth?
That's the other thing we have to ask, yeah.
Norris is available.
Oh, yeah, that's not good.
Yep. Yeah, also.
Should I text, want me to text Mickey and ask her?
Yeah.
Would she know?
Um, she might, it might be.
She probably would know. She, yeah. Okay, just wanted to let you know.
Okay, John responded that he's in town that night.
Okay, good. So he's watching.
May ninth, I will be there, yeah.
Okay.
We're scheduled for a meeting that night anyway, so.
Yeah, right, it is. So it would take the place of our regular select board meeting, honestly, is what it would do.
Okay.
Um, which. That's okay. Well, we'll tell them what we're thinking about here. It's easy enough to cancel. All right.
I'm guessing it was.
Well, right now, I think it's, you know, sports are outdoors, so it's less likely that, unless there's an event. The later we get into June, the more likely there's an event.
And positions, and there's graduations.
Yeah, there's all kinds of things.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It's not usually a Tuesday night, though.
Okay, we changed everything while you were gone.
Ed, we made, we made, I made the, a suggestion, um, that rather than trying to cram everything in, that we just postpone town meeting by one week to our regular select board meeting night of May ninth, so that we could get things tidied up, have time to really, you know, fine tune the warrant if we need to, and time to get it all squared away. Uh, just check with John, he will be in town that night. So we don't know if the school's available. That's our only challenge.
We can find out, and then.
I'm writing to her now, just to do a heck of it, to see if it's an online bait database that Mickey might be able to let us know.
Yeah, so what that changes, though, is Robert, well, even, even with the Monday, that changes Robert's.
Robert and Lucy, yeah, Robert and Lucy, availability.
Yeah.
And then, then the question is, since we don't have the capital back yet, and we're doing our, an override, do you want to just postpone it a week, or do you want to postpone it to the beginning of June?
No, no, no. That'll be a nightmare.
Okay.
And I also don't want a special town meeting, and I don't want a meeting on Monday, so.
If we postpone this meeting, we're going to have to postpone the election, because.
No, you don't. Election can stand.
Well, we have a bylaw that we changed. We changed it, because the first time I was here, I mean, I walked into a town meeting not being part of the budget process, and it wasn't a good thing, and we have a sense that a bylaw about it. So will we be able to get free cash for the ninth? I think that everyone's in agreement that ninth is better, even a week. Hopefully, we can get free cash certified by then, and we can avoid a June special town meeting and avoid a meeting on Monday night.
Fine.
That gives a little bit more time to, you know, just be sure of all the various articles and whatever we really need for.
Yeah.
For all that. We're going to give you a little bit more time on that. Has capital, were they able to make any decisions tonight, or they're just talking about? Were they able to score anything tonight, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I had to leave to come back and work on, work on some of this stuff, so.
Right.
I didn't even get to go over the town hall projects with them yet.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so one last thing, and then we're going to, go ahead.
Just a second. Does somebody have to check with Robert, because technically, he's the moderator, and.
Yes.
I, I think he has to.
Yep.
So I'm emailing him, or do you?
I can send him a text.
Do one of you want to, I can send him a text, but if you want to...
Go ahead, I don't have his contacts.
I do, I'll send him a text right now.
All right. So, if, from my understanding, we have a balanced budget figure, we have our override figure, we have the language for the ballot question.
Yep.
And what we still have to tidy up are the various warrant articles, right?
Right.
And we know we'll have to do those other calculations at some point on the budget, but it's not crucial for town meeting night. But, okay. Any, does, that feels like it clears, clears the deck a little bit.
Hmm.
Am I kidding myself here, or is this true?
Can I just ask this question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any interim, the number of days required between the town meeting and the election?
No.
Between the town meeting and the election?
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
I mean, it's the first and the third, so now it's not...
May 9th is not the first week.
Yeah.
May 9th is...
It would be...
I can check with the election and see if that's possible.
If we have the town meeting one week before the election, that's not a problem that we know about?
No, you could have, you could actually have the town meeting after the election.
We'd go against, we'd go against our bylaw, but, yeah. But, okay.
Let's just hope for the 9th. I wrote about the school, and I wrote to Robert. We'll see.
Okay. All right, so let's have a motion to just push the town meeting by one week until May 9th.
All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we postpone the annual town meeting from May 2nd, Tuesday, May 2nd, to Tuesday, May 9th.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, okay.
So, are we okay to not have a meeting on the 27th of April?
I think so. We will have one on the 25th, which is next Tuesday. That's already planned and posted, I believe, so that one's up, that stands, but, yes, I think we can give ourselves a break to not meet on next Thursday.
Okay, and then when do the capital, when do they have to be approved by? Can we just do that next Tuesday, too?
Well, if we have, I don't know if we'll have anything from them by Tuesday.
If we do, we can.
If we do, well, we can take what we have, but otherwise, we may have to...
Isn't there a deadline? They'd have to be on the warrant, so wouldn't they have to be, um...
Well, if we don't have it, then we would either need to make sure that we have appropriated all the free cash in one way or another at the ATM, and then have a special town meeting in June or July just to do the capital.
I know, I'm just trying to avoid that.
Yeah. I mean, so many people start traveling in June or July, or, you know, or...
Aren't they meeting upstairs specifically to...
They, they were meeting at 5 o'clock. I don't know if they're...
They had two hours up there until the next group came in, so.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to count on everything, here's somebody.
It would be nice to avoid a special town meeting if we have to...
Robert said, yes, can we do this legally? I would just say checking. What would be the legal, what would be the problem with that?
I believe with what the legislature actually moves forward, we can still do that.
During what, you mean during that COVID time?
I get everything in writing, so I just want to...
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. But we did, yeah, there were some exceptions made during the COVID emergency, right? But I don't know that those still carry through, do they? I don't know. All right. So, is there anything else that we need to hit for tonight, or just call it off for tonight? And then we come back on Tuesday with our regular agenda, and if anything, I mean, we'll have heard, right? If, you know, hopefully, we'll know before that, whether there's any legal issue here, but I, I'm not sure why there would be necessarily, but, the town meeting, hang on. I was looking at our bylaw on town meeting.
If you can give me some direction tonight, at least in the order of the warrant of where you might like things, that would be a huge help.
Oh, yeah, okay, in terms of the...
Not the bylaws first.
Yeah, I don't think the bylaws should go first.
That was my suggestion in this particular case.
We're not going to have people sticking around to arrest you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that's not the right list on the index, so.
So... I would say moving the, moving the naming rights up. Actually, that would have to probably follow the bylaw, so we approve the bylaw before we actually...
Well, and then, well, the thought process of where I have it now
Yeah.
is if that CPC article doesn't pass, then, that's why the naming articles are after the CPC articles.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I think that...
Okay. So maybe that comes after the CPC, but the question is, where do the bylaws come in relation to CPC?
Right afterwards.
Afterwards?
Yeah.
After CPC, after naming rights? I mean, the, the naming rights bylaw has been already approved, Rini. There's no new approval there. It's just if there was a, a little grammatical change, that's all there was, if there was anything. It's, it already passed down a meeting. It was approved last year.
Okay, then it doesn't have to be after the bylaws.
It's just that, under CPC, right, they were going to be working on the playground
Yeah.
allocation for the money, and then the, the naming was tied to that, so.
That would make sense.
Yeah, does it, does, I mean, I don't see it not passing, however, does it make any sense to say, oh, we're going to name, name something, and then, and then something have something not pass?
Ed, I like the order that you have things in now, basically, because, I mean, I think it's basically all the budget stuff.
On, on this part.
And then transfer.
On the agenda, not...
Then transfer.
All right.
And then the unique things like the municipal light, the opioid settlement.
Yeah.
And then the usual, maybe revolving limits usually are up higher, the budget stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's, I just left the bylaws from last year there, just as a reminder to me.
Yeah.
If the select board did want them up front, it's much easier for me to just take the new one and cut and paste into those places than to start from scratch.
I don't know, I think that's, that's going to be a lot to start the meeting with bylaws, frankly.
Well, like I say, I don't recommend it in this particular case.
I would tune them down further.
Yes, I, I would actually put them at the end.
I like the order that you have now.
I like the order that you have now. Maybe, maybe just moving up the revolving funds.
On the agenda, or?
Yeah, on, on the agenda one. So move up the revolving fund a little bit before the, the unique...
With the other financial things.
Yeah.
Yes.
After the, after the transfers, maybe, or somewhere up there. Um, and then I would put the naming rights right after CPC.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and before the bylaws.
And then that would leave, that would leave the bylaws last.
Yep.
Except for what et cetera is.
Oh, there's a zoning, yes, sorry, there's a zoning change.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, would that come, could come, come before the bylaws, maybe?
I would, yeah, I would put it right before the bylaws.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right before the zoning bylaws, right?
And then general, then zoning.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, generally, the order that you've got on the, on the agenda item list here, and we just have to double check that we got everybody we need, because that is, looks to be, depending on how we do the bylaws, how much of that we have to actually include. I mean, I thought we had like a couple of articles, excuse me, for the general one. One was recodification, and one just showed the, the changes.
I thought you actually had two with changes, but I could, my memory could be off.
I don't remember, but anyway...
Well, one was recodification.
Yeah. So, I mean, we're talking, you know, maybe 20, a little over 20 articles, maybe 20 to 25 articles, probably.
26 in there.
Yeah, okay, depending on, I'm not sure what the zoning was.
Yeah, we don't know.
I don't know what the zoning ones look like.
We don't know how many zoning ones are.
No, I don't.
Yeah.
I just know what's in the general.
Excluding the zoning ones.
Right.
You know how many zoning ones there are, Joy?
A lot.
The, the summary was six pages.
Well, I can tell you, because I've already had the conversation through email with Paul, is to print the entire thing is 132 pages.
Open up printing them.
Town council's suggestion is, whether they're in here or available as a handout, it might help. If you don't have anything available,
No.
I'm really worried that people, what are you changing, and, you know, it won't go through at all.
Well, you better add to the printing budget than before.
That was not, that was not their comment on the general bylaws, was it? But you're just describing the way the zoning has to present theirs.
Your 10 pages is much easier as a separate handout.
And, and they were okay that way?
Yeah, she said one of two ways, either include it in
Yeah.
in the warrant, or have, have, have the, have the reference in there and have it available as a separate handout.
Okay, because the way they're presented in here
Yeah.
Was the old ones.
That's the old stuff, we know that, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so we're not going there.
That, that was my page holder, just in case.
That's all that is.
Then why did we even...
So...
So for the zoning bylaws, are we going to have printed handouts, and then the summary and the warrant?
Well, I think, I know, I know the, I ran into the chair of the planning board this afternoon. We were doing our website training today, and he was hoping that we could get the zoning bylaws posted on the town website, so people could look at them online ahead of time. Which, I guess, is a long, it's a PDF document, I suppose, so...
Well, as long as it's not overly, you know, not too large, it can be done.
Depending on how big the file is, it should, you know, or unless it had to be broken into two parts or something.
And basically, I do the same thing with the 10 pages of the general bylaws.
Yeah, yeah. So they could be up online, and then, you know, we'd have to have, oh, boy. That's a lot of printing to do for a town meeting as a handout.
Was it single, single sided, or was it double sided, 130 pages?
He just said 132 pages. I'm, I'm assuming, and I could be wrong, whether that's, I'm assuming it's single. But, I don't know, I didn't ask that question.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll have to see about that, and, yeah. So under, just under the article on, on our current bylaw on town meeting, it just says that it should be held on the first Tuesday in the May, in May, and if not completed in reasonable time, shall continue on successive evenings, excluding Sunday and holidays. Town election shall be held the third Tuesday in May of each year. So that's, and then town warrant posted at least seven days in advance of the scheduled town meeting. So, that's all we know from anything of our own bylaws, so unless somebody else tells us that there's a... It doesn't sound like there's any issue in terms of having a, a certain amount of time lag between town meeting and, and election. Doesn't sound like there's any requirement, certainly in our own bylaws for that.
Other than the...
And Robert is available on the night.
Yeah, I just, and I wonder if we, I haven't heard back from Mickey, so we'll, if we don't hear back tonight, if you wouldn't mind, shoot her an email.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think whatever we can do to, to let the public know,
Yep.
whether it be on the website, a little thing in the paper.
We've got a little board out front, too, we can change, right? Yep, go ahead.
Lucy Dalton, I am going to change the board out front, the sandwich board, and then also, I was going to be putting a notice in the reminder about both of the election and the meeting, and then I was also going to put something in the Gazette, so.
Oh, okay, that's good.
And then, Ed, you can put something on the boom bar on the website.
I can.
Are we, are we getting the new website?
Huh?
Are we going to be getting the new website in the time for?
Maybe for a couple of weeks, probably.
Yeah.
We're, we're getting there. And then probably the other thing I think I'd like to try is bringing over the electronic messaging boards.
I was going to say, we've got, that's where I was going to go, we've got these electronic boards that we got during CAREs, let's make use of them.
Yeah.
Because they're a lot bigger than the little sandwich board out here, which is great, but it doesn't show up.
And then it will be on the town bulletin board and the calendar, and the, by town government, so.
And I don't know, sometimes, you know, the, the mothers' club board up at Pomer Meadow, if that were free, that could be another, that's one that people see a lot, I think, as you go by. The Lions Club has already taken, I think, with their scholarship message, but, so anyway, we can...
We just can't use the school.
I think those signs, I think there's two of those electronic signs, aren't they, right?
Yes.
So we could put one at each end of the town or something, I mean, the strategic location.
You could do that, or you could put them out here, my thought was, back to back, so you can read them from either direction.
Yeah, okay.
Lucy, can you put something up on the Southampton page on Facebook?
It's Brandon.
That's Randall. I can use the community, I can put it on the community page, the Southampton community page, Rand.
Facebook page.
Yeah, Randall is the Facebook page, yeah, but, yeah, I can use the community page.
So, okay. All right, we'll get the word out.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, anything else for this evening, then?
No.
All right, so no meeting next Thursday, but there's a meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, so Bradley, Ed, anything else? So we won't meet on Thursday. We'll meet Tuesday, the 25th.
Yep.
But not the 27th.
Yep.
And we'll take it from there.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so...
Theoretically, we wouldn't, we would not meet on the 2nd.
But we could.
We could if we had to.
It's our normal, the 9th usually is, yeah, so.
Right. What'd you say?
So we, we would probably...
Regular rotation would be May 9th for the select.
So I'll just put a question on the 2nd. Probably not during that first week of May.
Excuse me, sorry, Lucy, you will have to meet on the 2nd to sign the warrant.
Unless we sign it earlier.
Unless you sign it, yeah, unless, yes, sorry.
We'll be signing it next Thursday.
I don't know, we'll see.
Okay, sorry, yeah, okay, thanks.
From Legal Counsel, my question was, Michelle, are we able to legally move annual town meeting from May 2nd to May 9th if we have not posted it yet? Response is yes.
Okay.
Okay, good. So we just need to find out about the school
Yep.
before we public, publicize it widely.
Yeah, okay. But theoretically, we're, we're in business. Okay. Good, so with that, then...
Can you reach someone at the school, since they're already...
I just sent a text, but I have not heard. So it, maybe it would be better if it was an email, official.
You know, it's school vacation, and maybe people...
It's school vacation, too, so.
Vacation. So there isn't a Google Calendar for at least viewing.
We'll find out, we'll find out.
Okay.
You know, if we don't hear anything tonight, we'll...
Although I was very impressed that, and I know the principal's away on vacation, that she...
I know, she answered one of my emails today.
Yeah, she did.
So, yeah, she did. So, all right, so with that, let me take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's Joy and Rini, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned at 7:30.
Thank you, Jen and Lucy, and Bradley for being here.
Clarifying that.
And of course, Ed.
Those issues, but, yeah.
Lucy, thanks for being here. Jen, thanks for being here.